Good evening, I'm gonna call to order the regular meeting of the Board of County Commissioners, Stanley County on October twenty first, two thousand thirteen at seven P M. We welcome everyone here tonight, and as long as you'd like to attend the meeting, and also welcome the Brian Graves with the Stanley Press, and I guess Leon with the radio station becoming later in the meeting. I'm gonna call on Commissioner Dennis for the invocation. It'll be a little different tonight, we have different denominations, and I'd like to just have a moment of silence for either prayer or reflect back on this past week, or today, or whatever you want to do, so let's have a moment of silence. Now let's do the Pledge of Allegiance.
................................................................................................... Are there any adjustments to the agenda to be made? Hearing none, uh, accept the motion to approve the agenda.
Subway.
Uh, approved, uh, motion by Commissioner Dennis to approve the agenda, second.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Shuto, all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. The first item on the agenda, I recognize Ms. Gwen Henderson, the Transit Director.
Good evening, I'm here to, uh, for the F Y fourteen fifteen C T P Community Transportation Application Grant, and I apologize, it's this time of the year, uh, the voice comes and goes. Um, and this grant application is, funds the administrative budget and the capital budget for the Transportation Department. The administrative budget again this year, as in the past three years, has been capped at a request of two hundred twenty-six thousand six dollars, um, with a local match estimated at thirty-three thousand nine hundred and one. The capital budget for this year, we're gonna request replacement of two vehicles, and the lettering for those vehicles. We're also gonna replace, request replacement of all the vehicle radios to comply with the county's new communication system. Um, the state from the, the M D, our consultant with, with the D O T says that this is replacement, uh, should not have to go into the new scoring process that they're doing in the next five years, so hopefully we'll be able to get the money to replace all those for our fleet, instead of the county having to come up with that some other way. And also asking for some storage for the maintenance shop, uh, we need a little additional storage that can't seem to fit into the, to the actual bays, but the, uh, that's a ten percent county match, so that's about eighteen thousand forty-five dollars, and I'll be glad to answer questions.
Any questions from a board member?
Just a point of clarification, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, in, in your budget packet, there may have been some information about the capital being, uh, one hundred eighty-seven thousand nine hundred and forty-six dollars. Um, that had, that, that was an estimate at the time this was put together, and so what's on your cover sheet of a hundred and eighty thousand four fifty-two, with the county match of eighteen thousand forty-five is, is the correct amount, it just, um, and so I just wanna make sure you, you, you may have noticed those discrepancies, the administrative stays the same, but the capital's slightly less. Um, when this was put together, it was based on estimates, and it, uh, it says a total estimated amount, and it came in under those when we finalized it, so just wanted to make that point of clarification, in case there was a question of, of whether those numbers, uh, were consistent.
Correct, and D O T has a timeframe of when we have to get the information together and publish the public hearing notice, so all that fill in, in, in and out of that timeframe as well, so Andy is correct, that number did change slightly.
And, uh, most of the time, our local matches are, are supported by ridership, is that the case?
No, that's in the rope application, we've already received that money for this year, we received that in September.
Okay.
Uh, this is actual county local match, right.
Okay.
If I know the comments, I'm gonna call a public hearing, um, for approval on the resolution to apply for and receive fiscal year two thousand fourteen, two thousand fifteen Community Transportation Program Funds for Transportation Services Department. All those who wish to speak for or against this application, please come forward. Seeing none, I close the public hearing. Any discussion on the motion? If none, all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it.
Commissioner Morton, can I make a comment real quick, I mean, to, uh?
Certainly, go ahead.
I just wanted to say appreciate your work over the last month, I know you were one of the few county offices that were affected by the government shutdown, I know that you had to probably work a little harder, and...
Just a little different.
It's a little different, yeah, I think.
Than normal.
Yeah, you, you, you made it happen, so thank you very much for, for that.
The next item on the agenda is the appointments for the Board of Health, and I recognize Dennis Joyner.
Good evening, Commissioners, uh, we have five Board of Health members that are up for, um, that are becoming vacant as of the end of this calendar year. Dr. Ann Yao, uh, who's the veterinarian member, Dr. Hal Royer, who's a physician member, Dr. Janice Dunlap, the optometrist, Conrad Carter, the registered engineer, representative, and Deborah Norris, the registered nurse. Uh, two of those members, Dr. Royer and Deborah Norris, were fulfilling, uh, existing terms of, uh, Dr. Mullin and Margaret Rudisell, and so they are eligible to start their own, uh, term. The only one of the group that, um, cannot serve is Dr. Ann Yao, the veterinarian member, she's serving her third term, which, uh, uh, by statute, uh, members cannot serve more than, uh, three terms. So, um, we have mentioned it to the, uh, existing members who can continue to serve, and they said they would be willing to continue if so chosen, uh, and I know there is one, um, application that you should have there of a veterinarian member who's expressed interest in serving in the veterinarian role, so I just ask that you make these appointments as you choose.
Any questions by board members? All right, we have before us, um, requests for appointing to the Board of Health, and as Mr. Joyner said, four of the members are up for reappointment.
I'd like to make a motion that we reappoint Deborah Norris, Hal Royer, Janice Dunlap, and Conrad Carter, and also, um, appoint, um, Ms. Jordan, Dr. Jordan, to replace Dr. Yao.
We have an motion by Commissioner Shuto to make the appointments of four people for, uh, reappointment, and one new member, uh, Ms. Jordan, and second by Commissioner Donovan. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you. The next item on the agenda, um, is, uh, Ms. Stojanki with the Rocky River R P O.
Hello, gentlemen, how are you? I am Dana Stojanki of Rocky River R P O, and I am here to follow up on the discussion with, um, the Red Cross, Locust, Draft Comprehensive Transportation Plan, and we've been meeting for a while, the focus group, to discuss different alignments around the western part of the county, and N C dot staff wanted me to talk to all the jurisdictions about their preferences, so at this point in time, we're not asking for official action, because we're not putting a plan in front of you, but, you know, this is sort of just one piece of multiple things in the planning process, but what we're gonna be doing is, we're gonna be taking this map, there's actually two maps in your packet, um, and we're gonna be taking, um, that, that, those maps to the public, and we wanted to whittle down the amount of alignments that you see on the map, you see sort of all those green lines back and forth, and I'll go through them with you, um, and so our ultimate goal tonight is hopefully having, you know, hopefully a discussion, um, about, um, if you have preferences with any of the alignments for any reason, that we could, um, forward that information to North Carolina Department of Transportation to make their jobs easier, um, so with that being said, I gave Tyler an updated, a packet that has alignments, it says the draft project study alter, um, alternates, and those will list, they have numbers one, two, two A, three, three B, and four, and N C twenty-four, twenty-seven, and those are all the different lines on the map, so right now, and let me make sure that my map is correct, let's see, okay, so the map on your screen, the yellow line right here is the county line, um, and this is twenty-four, twenty-seven, um, and so, um, the, the northern alignment, and that northern alignment, let me blow it up, hold on a second, let's see, ooh, it's gonna be, it's going to be one, so you've got a, right now, it says A one, but it's actually the, the number one alignment, let me zoom that out a little bit, okay, so that one alignment, and again, it only, because the maps were so large, I apologize, they're on two different panels, so that goes to the north of twenty-four, twenty-seven, and that's gonna take up about eight miles of roadway, and that would be a new alignment, and that would come in, um, that, um, on the western termini, right at, sort of on the east side of Walmart and the community college, and then it goes all the way, and I'll flip to the next map, it's gonna go, that, continue in that northern alignment, and it goes, um, past, and it basically comes to the other side, and let me, I'll show you where the high school is, in red cross, to give you a frame of reference of where that, let's see, so the high school is right here, and so it comes in... So it comes in down here, so, let me make sure I've got that straight, so, okay, oh, I'm sorry, that's the wrong high schoo-, I apologize, that's, I was pointing out, um, that was the elementary school, I meant the high school, that's right here. Let me show this one more time. I'm just having a hard time moving this around, I apologize. Here we go, there we go, okay, so here's the high school, here's two oh five, and there's that, um, eastern termini for that one, and so you can look down for, um, the alternate one, and you can see some of the, the things that it crosses, the, the wetlands, it has four, four crossings of wetlands, and it takes up about one point nine acres, and you, as you go down, there's a stream crossing, um, line, there's, you've got, you can see residential impacts, business impacts, we looked at, we've got a good cemetery G I S, so we looked to see if there would impact any cemeteries, railroads, the P U V, um, is actually farms, so that's just lists out all the farms that it would impact, and then the jurisdictions affected. We also are trying to get per mile costs from N C dot, on how much they roughly would think it would cost, but we haven't gotten those numbers yet, 'cause again, we're still sort of in the beginning stages of all this, and so that's, that's the northern, that's the northernmost alignment, and I'm gonna zoom out again, and I'm gonna ta-, go, now that you sort of understand, sort of, the, how this sort of works, I'll go through these other ones, um, so we've got two other terminis on the western side, one is actually in Cabarrus County, right, um, on the, right, very close to the river, and then we had one right at the county line, and so we, you see this very southern alignment, this southern alignment bypasses basically, that's alignment four, and it, it, you know, goes very far south, and it's about, it's the longest one, it's about twelve miles, and we did that as a reaction to some of the comments and feedback that we are getting from the focus group, so they wanted to see what it would look like, and how many miles it would be if they, you know, if you did something in very southern, um, uh, more southern than I think, um, N C dot was initially thinking of, so that's that alignment, and you, again, we have these two maps, which I know makes it difficult, but you can see that it goes back up, and so here's Oakboro down here, so it's still north of Oakboro, then it comes up pretty close to that, um, other termini, and then we have a bunch of alignments in between twenty-four, twenty-seven, and that very southern alignment, and it's, it, it, because of, there's a lot of development there, there are a lot of discussions on where to put this line, I mean, we're still discussing it, I mean, just because the, we have these five alignments doesn't mean that we'll go back to the focus group and we'll come up with some other choice that's maybe better for everyone, but, um, if, the alternate two, three A, two, um, alternate two, two A, three, and three B are all within this section, and it just depends on how you piece it together. The one thing I will point out is that there is the, uh, alignment two, um, alignment two, and I believe three A, so here's two A and three B, and alternate two, they're all south of twenty-four, twenty-seven, but there are two sections, three B and three A, that go sort of, um, cross twenty-four, twenty-seven, so it basically goes south of, um, Locust, and then north of, on the twenty-four, twenty-seven of Red Cross, on the Red Cross side, so it sort of does a, a little, um, it, it jumps over twenty-four, twenty-seven, so, um, and those are sort of the, you know, those are the choices, and like I said, we're open to discussing other choices, we're open to discuss, you know, what the ones that you hate, love, or, you know, if you have no comment, but we're here to be as transparent as possible during this process.
Dana, I think that, uh, looking at this, any one of the two southern routes between Stanfield and Locust, twenty-four, twenty-seven would be, I think would be fine for us, I, I don't know what the rest of the board thinks, how the real southern route was, was just, I don't think would be any good for us, and, but we do have utilities already on, in that corridor, and it'd be sort of not smart on our side to support something where we don't have utilities, you gotta try to run them there, so, but I think either one of those two routes, uh, between Stanfield and Locust would be fine, you know, and just work them out all, in, all the way, plus the rest of the board think. Mr. Donovan, do you have, um, input from the four towns?
So we are, right now, we are in the process of doing that, we have, um, I went to the Stanfield meeting a couple weeks ago, and, you know, they gave me their input, and they basically, they don't want anything near their town, I think they pretty well said they want either the very southern or the northern, they're, you know, they were uncomfortable with the ones in between, um, Locust, we are, they're having, their staff is working with their council to, um, report back to our meeting on the, um, November fourth, so our next official meeting is November fourth for the focus group, so their, their staff is handling that, so I'm not sure what Locust's preferences at this point, and Red Cross seems pretty open to any of them, so, you know, Oakboro, they've been sort of on this, I mean, they've been attending, but they've been kind of quiet, 'cause I think it doesn't, um, I, you know, I, I, they haven't said a preference, I mean, we can ask them, but they just haven't been, um, they haven't given a preference thus far.
And these will be non-access roads?
Yeah, so, okay, that's a great point, thank you, Commissioner, these roads are gonna be limited access, so this is not, this is not a boulevard, this is gonna be, those little circles that you see are interchanges, so this is gonna be very limited access, this is, the point of this road, if they're gonna put this infrastructure, is, is getting traffic from point A to point B as fast and safely as possible, so it's gonna be very limited in terms of the impacts on development, it would, development would happen around those access points, you know, um, but in terms, there would be no driveway cuts along this, this road, I mean, it would be all fenced off.
And I know that, uh, the, uh, rating that, uh, D O T is doing now also includes safety.
Yes.
So how does, uh, these haven't been evaluated for that yet, right?
No, because a part of the, the new process, the S T I that they're doing, you have to get the plan, you have to have an adopted plan in order to get it ranked, and so that ranking process won't happen until the spring, so we don't really know what the scores of any of the projects are gonna be until, until the spring.
Okay, and again, are you asking us to choose which one the county commissioners would?
No, I'm, I'm, N C dot, this is sort of unusual, N C dot wanted to know if there were any preferences, they're trying to be as transparent as possible, and make sure we get input from everyone, we're gonna go through the official public process, once we get all this, um, sort of worked out with the focus group, we just don't wanna be off target, we don't wanna be over here and the commissioners and the town councils all thinking one thing, so, you know, we just wanted to see if, like, the utilities is a great point, you know, the utilities are on the south side, so that's something that we will note, and go back and talk to, you know, the focus group about, because that was, that has not been brought up yet, so, you know, I think that's, that's a valid, you know, if the, so...
And I would, I'm not interested in necessarily choosing a line, but I think that what Commissioner Dennis is saying, and what we've said as a board, what you just said about, we're interested in moving traffic, I think there's certain principles that we're interested in, and, and would love to see happen.
Okay.
Uh, and those do include the idea of, of not interfering with the functions of the towns, to creating, uh, a best safe route, to make sure that we're not, uh, interfering with the movement of people and goods in and out of our county, uh, because that's gonna be real important to us, uh, when it comes to, uh, economic development, um, and of course, low cost and, and fastest routes too, so, uh, I think all those things are principles that, that we would like to see, and certainly have supported not only in, in, in looking at this map, but in other things that, that we've talked about.
Okay, duly noted.
Mr. Shuto? Uh, just to just a couple of things, and, um, I know we talked about moving, moving commerce and moving people, and, um, you know, that one way far, and also having access for people, you still don't wanna lose the commerce of travelers stopping in to get something to eat, that one way far south, I mean, that's a good four or five miles from, from Locust, where all the restaurants and stuff are, but, um, alternative three A, I mean, that's only three quarters of a mile, I think, where the, the interchange will be from getting to Locust, and it'll be pretty close to, maybe about a half mile from Stanfield, and, um, I think that, that our planning, the, what's at the connect meeting, we talked about the farmland up in the northern part, you know, that, that would kind of cut into the farmland going up north, and I'm like, Commissioner, and so the southern, and the other one is with Oakboro, I thought it'd be interesting why Oakboro didn't weigh in, because that one route, if they went that real southern route, that would've put that real close to Oakboro, you know?
They, they will, they will weigh in on November fourth, I just haven't heard what they, so...
Okay, 'cause that one on the south, but even the one there, even al-, even the alternative two route up there, that actually brings people a little closer to, to get one way or the other, so, I'm, I'm like with Commissioner Dennis, and, and probably, you said the southern, the two southern routes look the best for me, and then the other thing about planned growth is, you know, we're gonna build the road, and hopefully we're figuring out what it's gonna be like fifty years from now, when we, they'll accommodate that, that growth.
I appreciate you mentioning about trying to save the farmland, 'cause that was another principle, I think, that we certainly talked about, and we need to include in, in, uh, what we shoot for.
I think she, that, that the state's looking for us to just to give them some guidance of what we would support, and, uh, I don't really wanna make a motion or water disconsensus, but I think we ought to support those two southern routes, not the real southern.
I have a comment on that, the southern, I agree with Commissioner the southern route, the southernmost, I don't think that's the most appropriate as far as I'm concerned, as far as the rest of the routes are concerned, I would be interested in how Locust and Stanfield and, or what, what their concerns are, but that's their area that, that we'll be traveling through, uh, passing through, um, but, uh, I do know that the existing road is sort of a joke once you get to Red Cross, because you have three stoplights within a mile, within a mile of each other, and the one at Bethel Church Road is, uh, unusual, because that one car can stop traffic going towards Charlotte, or coming from Charlotte, and it's a, it's a, I travel that road every day, 'cause my office is in Locust, and that stoplight is a pain, uh, just be blunt about it, but other than that, I, for a thoroughfare that's, that's not accessible, would be a great for, to transport traffic across, but, uh, anybody have any other comments tonight? We appreciate your comment and discussion, and showing this to us, Mr. Stojanki.
No, that's perfect, and what, what, what the next steps is basically, we'll go back to the focus group, and we're hoping that in the winter, we'll be able to come back to y'all with a actual draft plan for you to look at, that we'll go for public process, public hearing, and then we'll come back for an adoption.
Thank you very much.
Was that enough information for you to go back and say that, you know, the commissioners are leaning towards the two southern routes between, they're, they're not the real southern?
What I'll do is, I'm gonna, I'll get the minutes, and I'm gonna lay out what, um, Commissioner Donovan said about the principles, and what you all said, and combine it, and we'll, and Michael Sandy is your representative at the November fourth meeting, he'll, um, talk to those points, so thank you all.
Thank you, Dana.
Thanks, ma'am. The next item, I recognize Mrs. Nancy Bryant, the interim director of the Upper P D Farm and Food Council Annual Report. Welcome, Miss Bryant.
Thank you, Commissioner Morton, and good evening, Commissioners, uh, my name is Nancy Bryant, and as he said, I'm serving as the interim director of the Upper P D Farm and Food Council, and on behalf of the council, I'm pleased to present our first annual report, since your commission endorsed the resolution to, uh, support our council last September. Uh, just a brief word on our vision, our vision is a sustainable, small, um, locally-based, economically resilient farm and food system for the three county region, for Anson, Stanley, and Montgomery, actually for the whole of the Charlotte region, but we are working as a subregion and with our council. Just a, uh, the brief word about the history for, uh, Mr. Commissioner Shuto, who is new, um, U P F F C was launched this past January officially, uh, after two years of planning, we had a, an interim board that worked throughout twenty-twelve, and then handed it off to a, uh, Farm and Food Council representatives in November, and then these new representatives began their work in January. Since January, the, uh, representatives from the three counties, there are five from each county, plus a liaison, uh, non-voting liaison from Union County, and, uh, that's Dustin Adcock, our new, you, you know, our local foods, uh, ag director, uh, agent, um, we've worked to develop our role, our structure, and have worked primarily this year to promote public awareness about a, a local farm and food system, and we've done all the things that a new group needs to do, we've created the bylaws, come up with the name, logo, website, all those good things, and thanks very much to many people in this county who helped us, such as Chad Kobel, your I T director. We've participated in, uh, various TV and radio shows, not only here, but in Charlotte, and, uh, we've been in newsprint, uh, in all the three counties, we've put on community forums in the three counties, and participated in other community events throughout the year. We've sent, in particular, um, been involved with the Connect Our Future, uh, si-, um, fourteen county region, um, project, I, I lost my word there, and I, uh, the, the Connect Our Future, and in particular, of course, we're with the Food Systems, uh, Working Group, in fact, tomorrow, several of our group, people are going to Charlotte to focus groups, and again, on Thursday, we're going to meetings and... and again, on Thursday, we're going to meetings in Charlotte for the Food Systems as part of the Connect Our Future. In particular, we've promoted our, the Farm Fresh Ventures, which you know to be the five county farmers co-op based in Wadesboro and involves our county, uh, the new Stanley County Farmers Market, other farmers markets, C S As, that's a community-supported agriculture like the G H A, uh, program and other small farm, and small farm operations in all three of the counties. Uh, we've supported and promoted the Cooperative Extension Agents, um, campaigns, in particular, their North Carolina ten percent campaign, which encourages everybody, both individuals and, and, um, government agencies and everybody to purchase ten percent of your food locally. And finally, uh, we are working on and we're inviting you commissioners in particular, uh, all citizens are invited to our November twelfth event called Celebrate Local Farms and Food. It will be held at Christ Episcopal Church here in Albemarle and you are, uh, in particular invited to come, it begins at six o'clock and you'll get a special invitation about that. Uh, just a brief word about one of our core elements, economic development, because we know that's one of your concerns. Here in our rural counties, there is a huge economic development opportunity to promote more local farms and food. Uh, last year when we were here, I think we told you that in two thousand and ten, the Charlotte region spends, spent two, five hundred and twenty million dollars on produce alone, just fruits and vegetables, but only three percent of that went to our local farmers. In other words, um, we only spent eighteen million dollars of that here in our region, we sent all the rest of that money to China and every place else. What if we made that ten percent? That would be fifty-two million dollars, it would be going back into our Charlotte, into our region, right here in Stanley County. Finally, we have an ask of you tonight, not money, but we ask you if you would consider purchasing ten percent of the county's food locally. That is food for prisons, for the schools, uh, for agencies, for the government, for example, even, even a simple thing such as when you have a catered dinner, would you ask your caterer to, to buy ten percent of the, the food locally? If, if you consider that we eat thirty-five billion dollars worth of food in North Carolina every year, if we could buy ten percent of our, all of our food locally, that would be statewide, three point five billion dollars to come back into our economies. So we have a real opportunity here and we'll be in touch with you again this, with our, about this ask. Finally, thank you for your endorsement, thank you for, um, many of you for your encouragement, especially we thank, um, Manager Lucas and others on the commission who have helped us in all kinds of ways, thank you very much. And if you have any questions?
Any questions to Ms. Bryant?
I'd just want, thank you for the, this is a pretty good report here to look through, thank you very much for the report you put together.
And we thank you and we'll be in touch.
Thank you for coming. I wanted to, um, compliment Jennifer Layton on our, in our health department for the work that she does on this local, uh, Stanley Commons Farmers Market, um, and it's been a great asset, I think, to have, um, an opportunity to go somewhere else besides, and I certainly don't wanna take anything away from the farmers market that meets at the, um, at the market station on Wednesdays and Saturdays, but we've had an opportunity to get something here locally too. And I, I certainly, uh, concur with what you said Nancy about making sure that if we spend our money on local foods, that certainly, uh, generates, uh, our local economy and, and provides opportunity for that money to ripple throughout our local economy. We, that three point five billion dollars in North Carolina is, is substantial, but we can certainly impact our own local economy.
Yeah, for every dollar that you, you buy locally, it, it increases or exponentially about seven, up to seven dollars, uh, according to some research. But yes, Jennifer Layton will be on, um, uh, the council, uh, starting in January to representing, uh, Stanley County.
The next item on the agenda is the Motor Vehicle Tax Release and Refund Author, Authority Resolution. Mr. Lucas?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Um, in the past, the, this, this came up as a result of the change from, um, the county collecting, uh, motor vehicles and personal property to, um, the, the state taking over that responsibility, uh, back in, um, August. And so, what we're asking the board to approve this evening is, uh, by statute, a resolution delegating its authority to determining requests for releases or refunds of taxes of less than a hundred dollars, uh, to the finance officer, um, county manager or county attorney, in this case, we're asking you to, uh, delegate that authority to the finance officer for all motor vehicle, personal property, uh, tax releases and refunds under a hundred dollars, anything over a hundred dollars would, would come before this board, there are very few motor vehicle, uh, releases or refunds over a hundred dollars and so you're not gonna, we, we don't believe we're inundating you, uh, by, with that, um, and we think, and, and to be honest with you, we've been handling all of these in the past and I, it, we just realized that we weren't necessarily complying with, uh, with general statute, so to rectify that, um, we're, we're asking for your consideration of this resolution this evening.
Any questions, uh, Mr. Lucas? A move to approve, approve by Commissioner Dennis and second by Commissioner Donovan. Any discussion on the motion, on the favor of the motion, please say aye. All opposed? The ayes have it. The last item on the agenda is the consent agenda, considering, consisting of the minutes of the rubber meeting on October seventh, on request, acceptance of monthly finance report for three months ended September thirty, two thousand and thirteen, and the Rocky River R P O on request adoption of a mini Stanley County local coordinated plan. What's the pleasure of the board?
As presented.
Uh, mo- motion by, um, Commissioner Dennis to approve as presented and second by Commissioner Shuto, on the favor, please say aye. All opposed, no. The ayes have it. That brings us down to the public comments section. Does anyone in the audience wish to make a public comment tonight? Hearing none, uh, go to the next item on the agenda for the general comments and announcements, I'll start with Commissioner Donovan.
Last, um, week, on October the seventeenth, I got the opportunity to attend the North Carolina Workforce Development Partnership Conference. There, um, we had, uh, some local folks who were recognized with the Governor's Award, um, and it was, uh, they were recognized, uh, Carnes Miller Gear and Power Stream Industries and the cooperation that they had with, uh, the Stanley Community College, um, on computer, numerical, control machinist program. Actually, I think Carnes Giller Mir, excuse me, Carnes Miller Gear provided classroom space, equipment and employees, uh, for instructors and also set up a five thousand dollar scholarship program for students. Power Stream provided job shadowing and specialty techniques and employees as instructors. This was really the effort that kicked off the, uh, initiative that the Community College is, is, um, is halfway through right now and one that the county commissioners supported. And, uh, th- these guys, I think, we owe a debt of gratitude to, because they saw kind of a futuristic idea and put their money where their mouth was, helped the students get started and as, uh, Dr. Brenda Kaye said in her comments, uh, and upon accepting the awards, is this gives people the opportunity to change their lives, because it gives them an opportunity to have, uh, a very sustainable income and, and to do something that is, uh, cutting edge and, and, and it's gonna be real important moving forward, so, um, I just wanted to recognize them and thank them for their efforts and, and look forward to what's gonna become of the program that's at the Community College.
Thank you, sir, and I wanna kinda jump the gun right here, I think I failed to make a comment tonight about, um, Chairman Gene McIntyre's absence. He is, his wife had a minor accident today and, uh, he felt like, he called me and told me, would I please chair this tonight, because he felt like he needed to stay up and be at home with her tonight. It's not a major thing, but it's a ma- it's a matter of concern over, um, oh, she's going through this, 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 recovering from this, uh, minor accident, but that's not the reason he's not here with us tonight. Commissioner Dennis?
I have no comment.
Commissioner Shuto?
Yeah, just a couple of things real quick, first of all, just a reminder that the Senior Center has put together a, with the help of, um, Dr. Lassiter and Norwood Dental Clinic, Billy Mills, you know, the only, he's the only American to win the ten thousand meter gold medal in the Olympics, he's gonna come and speak on Tuesday, October twenty-ninth, at one o'clock at the Senior Center and I think they have like three hundred tickets, you get them at, um, Norwood Dental Clinic, Vacandashore, or at, um, the Senior Center and that should be pretty, I think we're pretty honored to have him here and I appreciate Dr. Lassiter for funding this. And just a quick shout out to, to Becky over at the Senior Center, a lot of these projects that she, she does, she actually gets sponsors for them, so it doesn't really cost the county money. So, um, that should be pretty unique, so hopefully y'all can, people can come out to that and then, um, actually, I covered both things, so I wanted to thank, thank you for getting sponsors for these things.
County Attorney, Ms. Fur.
No comments, sir, thank you.
And County Manager, Mr. Lucas?
Mr. Chairman, um, just a, just a quick note, I had an opportunity to, to meet with Dr. Griffin this morning, um, and she wanted me to extend an invitation, uh, to each of you that if, if at any point in time you would like to take a tour of the schools with her, uh, and have an opportunity to go into, whether it be a middle school, elementary school, high school, and, and see some of the things that they're working on, new initiatives, uh, how they're, um, how they're rolling out, uh, some of these technology initiatives, um, and just also just being able to see some of the, some of the capital needs in the schools, uh, she has opened up an invitation, if you'll just contact her office, she said she would be more than happy to, to work around your schedules, don't, you don't, doesn't necessarily, you have to go as a group, doesn't necessarily have to do it a specific day, she'll try to accommodate you any way that you can, so just want, she wanted me to make sure I extended that invitation to you all this evening.
Thank you for that.
Can I ask a question, just for clarification, if, if she's offered us the invitation and we do go, can, do we, can, is two the most can go at a time?
Two would be the most that could go at a time, that's correct.
No other comments, um, I'll entertain a motion to go into closed session to discuss a personnel issue in accordance to G S one forty-three, three eighteen, point one one nine, parentheses, A, parentheses, six, and a real estate transaction in accordance to G S one forty-three, three eighteen, point eleven, parentheses, A, parentheses, five.
So moved.
So moved by Commissioner Dennis, second. Commissioner Donovan, on the favor, please say aye.
Aye.
We are in closed session, thank you.